Or a group of people directly by what you say, be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join public comment, just put your name in the chat. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Is there anyone online? Is there anybody in the chat? All right, and then we're going to move on. We are looking for the approval of the financial reports and bills.
I'm going to recommend that you approve the financial reports and bills and move to do so for December twenty three. With the note that it was super interesting to see donations in December. Just a couple of donations to our school, whether it's a library or athletic facilities. I'm just really, really nice time of year.
Nice. Is there a second? Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Long range planning.
Okay, and we started off the meeting discussing the website and our athletic schedules. We discussed a new app that the winter sports teams are using called Team Reach, which is very easy. It seems like everybody's engaged in using that well. Maybe there's come up a couple of other like open topics we talked about. And like student teacher ratios, et cetera. And then a little bit of time spent on the community survey. So there was no way to really weed out any duplicates, you know, they sent out the survey twice. We captured the people who didn't get it the second time. There was no way to weed out which individuals answered it twice. But but we got a number of like additional responses in the second survey. And and had some pretty solid results and just being a small community, a pretty decent, like five percent margin of error, four and a half percent margin of error. But that I think is to be expected from what I understand. And and so we took that information going into our next conversation and presentation with Myron. And they went through costs of remodel and costs of building new, all things that we had known. And we added that information to the information from the district, which was, this is how much we can take out as a as a district, this is how much money we can ask to borrow. We anticipate six, eight percent interest somewhere in there. And this is how much you can expect your taxes to go up if our budget is twenty five million dollars. If our budget is forty six million dollars, which is the absolute top limit of what we could ask for. And looking at the costs of the building and the amount that we're able to take out, plus what our community probably would want to pay more in taxes, you know, like considering all these things. We learned that a new build is probably out of reach. And that was like maybe to some of us, maybe not like a huge shock. But but the there was a large group of us that were just kind of like, well, how can we make this work and like, what else can we do? Everybody's asking questions, we're asking questions about staging and timing and trying to try to see if there's another option. In addition to looking at a person deeply at the remodeling and reconstruction of like our current infrastructure. And and it was pretty good conversation. But we also need a little bit more data and Myron is meeting with the district tomorrow, the core team tomorrow. And getting some more information, some more numbers for long range planning to ask or to review. And and the committee members are writing down questions and kind of going through this process of like, okay, well, like, what are our next steps and what are we gonna do? But we had to like just take a moment, take a deep breath because everybody wants to play problem solver here and everybody wants to really be involved. I don't think we're quite at that stage yet. And so so when the core team meets, they'll come up with some more like maybe concrete numbers and not just numbers, but priorities. You know, where where is our district priority based on our like previous ten year plan and our like current, our current needs, you know, we've had we've had them all like kind of broadly outlined and now we're gonna dive in a little bit. So we're getting some information from them over the next week. And obviously that will be shared with the board as well, so that we can come up with some good questions on how to prioritize our next steps. And then what eventually to ask of the community.
That's a lot.
If you guys have any questions, like we could like, otherwise I think maybe put it in the discussion item in the next.
I think so, they will have an opportunity to. So look at now that we're looking at the remodel or our priorities within the building within this footprint. Come back with options within two dollars a month. My room will present again to long range planning and then we'll have them at the February meeting. Reviewing what those three, four, five options may look like from just essentials, which is about thirteen to taking into consideration what staff input was in terms of safety access. So some feedback there, so then we'll start laying out. And now that we can't do this and this, I want to look at within this, what are our ranges? But yeah, my.
Any questions? No solutions to the problem? Thanks. Administrative reports?
Busy time, a lot of the things that are on the agenda. Review the knowledge planning, budget as I can talk that. But don't counsel your own thoughts in January, the big month, and we're gonna start looking at next year, font sizes. Staff needs. So tonight the board will be approving or limiting or not limiting seats, so based on regular at open moment. Special at over a moment that kind of kicks the staffing and budget process off. While we can have, I'll send out another email to staff, maybe just submit any requests they might have to transfer. That's just see where we will add where they might go. But that's gonna, you know, be encompassing, so that'd be big. Met with Nick Madison from CISA yesterday afternoon at three, just reviewed CISA services. Started talking generally about next year in terms of what we would like to see, what we may need. He asked for any concerns. You know, the top concern from the contract issue would be getting face to face versus current student. And we talked therapy and he knows that from the other school, that would be the only area that I said, you know, we can change or improve on that. Talking about people services, talk a little more about strategic planning. And Trigone was taking the job at Go Gaver College, he was going to do a strategic plan and Nick was looking at who might be able to do it now at CISA. He offered, you know, he could do it as well, so he's thinking. That through and he's gonna send me some dates. It might appear that we're moving it down, we are a little bit, but it'll take us about four or five meetings to come up with, analyze, and develop a new strategic plan, so he's optimistic that we would have that eight hours. Just to remind, as I were, when we have a major storm warning, I'll have a little bit more flexibility and it's a sort of a start, let's get ready, snow may come in the fall where the winter. We didn't ask for all the pictures, so we already set information off of the staff. ELC that there's a high probability there's a blizzard warning, it's still on the flight tomorrow at six AM. Starting at six AM. Out of a precaution, it might start at two, it might start at. But you don't want to get stuck in a blizzard because right in that it says.
Thank you. High school, middle school, a lot of stuff in my report that I already submitted that we went through, so some cool stuff happening with our visual arts and design. So we've got some really cool things happening there. Awesome that we have a play that we're looking at putting together, I'm super excited about that. So once we have more information about dates and times, we'll get that out, I'm really excited about that. Some extra things that have happened just recently are Start College Now and Early College Credit Program. That information just went out to the sophomores and juniors yesterday. So we're starting that process, which is always really exciting to see what the kids are looking into and where they want to head, so that's happening. Just on Tuesday, I believe it was, Rick took some middle school band kids to Northwestern for the all conference band, which sounded like it went really well, so I'll hopefully maybe have some more information to share about that later. Some pictures maybe, we'll see what happens. Rick's over, that's why I'm doing that. And then in terms of for summer school, I have a meeting with Lisa Todi next week, just to get my feet wet and like, what are the things that we need to start with? When do we need to start meeting with staff? Ivy has talked with elementary ki- kids, the elementary staff over there, just letting them know kind of what the changeover is gonna be. So going into next week, we'll start diving into a summer school and what that's gonna look like and how do we keep it growing from the great thing that it is? To now, how do we get it to a whole district K twelve, four K twelve? And building it just to be an even better program, so I'll start working on that really heavily into next week, once I figure out all the little details that we need to have and then I can start building from there, so. Outside of that, most of the stuff is in the report already that you can take a look at and if you have questions, just let me know. There was a lot of kids, you know, it was interesting because you have the ones where you're like, oh, those are drama kids, those are drama kids. But he's also been able to pull in a few of our more athletic boys. And so that's been drawing kind of a different crowd to come in too, so I think it's something new. Oh, and to go along with that in February during our cabin fever week, we're trying to put together a variety show. So that's gonna be, I'm pretty excited about one too, so trying to get that 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 kind of theater outlook and and things happening more in our building, just because it just builds so much, you know, school spirit and community and stuff. So we're really excited to get that stuff happening again.
And and in this whole community.
Oh, yeah.
Big issue, so that's.
Yeah, and the the for the play, they're looking at doing one weekend here and then one weekend at Stage North. So they kind of get the big theater feel and then they can do it here as well, so it's really exciting.
All right, elementary, just before winter break, we had a family event, winter themed at the elementary school. We invited all of the families to come in, four K through sixth grade, and each grade level did a little something different in their classroom. And some of it was highlighting their student work, they playing math games together. Fourth grade got creative and they did a parents for students kickball game outside, we didn't have snow yet, that was a blast. Fifth grade did something similar with castle guards in the gym, it was really competitive, parents first kids. Families had a really nice time, there was live music in the lunchroom, some snacks, healthy snacks for families to have, art projects. Some families stopped in just quickly and some stayed for hours and it was just a really great opportunity to have people in the building and connecting right before winter break, so. It was really fun. The ELC also did a similar event, it was just a few days earlier prior to that, a really great turnout for that as well. And another ELC update is we do have the posting open for a preschool teacher. We're hoping, as you remember, to expand the preschool room, which would take some students off of the waitlist at that level, but they're also ready, students ready to transition. So it would hopefully make an impact on the waitlist overall. So I hope and Director Jamie Lightner, we both hope to move forward with that sooner rather than later, so within the next month or two, well, you should be able to see that change. School improvement update and school improvement committee will meet at the end of the month. Right now is actually closing out the second or the first semester, so second quarter is closing out. Star assessment, district assessments are happening, high school level, middle school and elementary. And then we're using utilizing Fastbridge at the early elementary. We're already seeing some really exciting growth and proficiency, so we will review all of that data at the school improvement committee meetings, but we'll also share that with the board at the February meeting, so you can see what that progress looks like over the course of the year and as we prepare for the ACT, ACT Aspire and Forward Exam coming up this spring. In the meantime, even though those meetings are not happening very frequently, the work is happening every day. And so in addition to that star data and utilizing that data in the classrooms, we're also developing the system to support students with individualized support. So we went from last year meeting at every quarter with that star data, to now we're meeting more frequently using using that data. We just had one a couple of weeks ago as we're coming back, adjusting interventions and supports. And so the staff K through four K through twelve has worked super hard on just making that school improvement work part of our everyday tasks. And then staff meetings, we're actually digging into it as well, and so Curriculum Council is sharing that load and taking on a leadership role of school improvement work. And so if you remember, one of our focus areas is depth of knowledge, at the staff meetings, we're gonna be focusing on ELA standards and how like so first grade and second grade will work together, what does the standard look like in the different grades? How is it different? Our data shows that we're doing a nice job of introducing all standards, we're not missing anything. But we're not going deep enough with all students and that's where those conversations are gonna happen. And then the following week will be then, like so a second grade met with first grade, then next week they'll meet with third grade. And so it'll be really nice vertical alignment throughout, even up to middle school and high school, so that's some of the the work that's happening. Other things that Curriculum Council, really nice communication, so if you remember, one of our focus areas is district updates, so just as Dr. Ryder mentioned, all of those important things that are happening at long range planning is also getting to Curriculum Council and then to all of the staff through that system. And then we really focused on our PLC leadership and improving the professional development we provide for PLCs, especially for staff who join us. And then using data, just like we mentioned, the school improvement work in our meetings and how that's part of the PLC process. Parent Advisory Committee, we have not had a meeting since the last school board meeting, but we do have one coming up next week, so I'll provide a more detailed update next month. But if you remember that some of our topics are food and nutrition and just like our school improvement work, even if there isn't a meeting happening, it doesn't mean the work isn't happening. And so we have made some pretty significant changes on the food that we're ordering, that was feedback we received from parents and community members. Kind of the big picture was the hope that we would limit sugar, that we would prioritize local food, whole foods. And we've been doing that, we did see the positives of that, student or students are super excited, families are excited, they love the oatmeal today. We also saw some of the challenges and barriers, including the increased financial cost of ordering that way. But it's a.
We gotta hear everything, but I mean, I will say, playing to be one thing. No matter what the cost is, we have to then follow up on it. Having cheese that's approved by the state to counter school lunch and it's full of chemicals and dyes that look like cheese versus real cheese. It might cost us a lot, and we have to go through this cheese, we have to go, we're gonna serve pizza, it's gonna be the healthiest. Chicken, real chicken, so I mean, we're gonna go through that, I will continue to monitor that and work with that, but the feedback on some of the changes is better.
Really good, from students, even at the elementary level, and then staff and families too, for sure. Another important topic is remember is discipline and accountability at the elementary level, and I think that's a discussion item tonight. So I actually have the presentation that was at that parent advisory committee, I think I just touched on it last month, so I have that for the board. Sort of in a modified version to share that information and I did invite Ms. Kelly here too. And she's been a big part of that process and sharing with parent advisory committee, so we're looking forward to sharing a little bit more on that. And then my last one is just some PTO updates, you noticed in the board report, some of the color run prizes and we prioritize experiences this year over some of the like trinkets and like awards. And that had really good feedback, it's not maybe quite as flashy, but it was so, so fun for kids to participate in extra field trips and hot chocolate bars and just really cool things happening at the school level. And then of course, our top winner won a trip to the movie theater, so that'll be happening in the next couple of months. But we have some more PTO things coming up, family movie night within the next month or two, so especially if it gets cold and lots of snow. That's something we can do that isn't necessarily very weather dependent. And then we're starting to plan, maybe perhaps a leap day family event. So we've done one during school hours, but now we're gonna have one after hours where families can come in, eat a meal together, do activities with their child and learn information, important information. That's how we share a lot of our Title One information and other things we want to get out to families, so I'll continue to share more about that as we move forward.
Couple of additional things, technical corrections and policy have been made, I'll send it back tomorrow, there are a lot. In this update, most events are like policy meeting, all of them, in fact, one and then almost like three others, so that should go quickly, we will not have any over here for that, so we'll work through that as a school, I'm sorry, as a district, a couple of nice opportunities that will be emerging with summer school. Swimming, yeah, last year, it looks like they want to partner again, and then going back to having our summer sale, so that'll be something that we'll reach out to the city and and you have your extension to bring that in for all pages with kids. Be remiss if I didn't congratulate Wayne Gaspari, his induction to the Hall of Fame, all the dedication he's had to develop our players and students over the years, congratulations for that, well deserved honor.
For sure, thank you for bringing that up. Consent agenda. We have a lot of coaches.
Doesn't look like a relaxed spring, but.
I'm interested to approve the consent agenda.
A little second. Any questions, comments?
I haven't got. I would like to thank Rick Seppa for all his years here. Working for the school, the kids and the community.
And I would like to add to that too, is that, you know, I don't know if we should include number seventeen.
I agree, cut it out, it's fine.
But yes, thank you, Rick. I'm not exactly sure how Washburn will continue without you in this building. I mean, you're like a forever piece of it and we expect to see you around. Yep. Okay, so did we, we had, did we get a second?
We had a second.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Are you guys gonna vote? Motion carried. Discussion items, legislative, anything that?
I would say that when they get back in the session after the WEA meeting, they start to ramp up and all that, committee meetings, there's a whole list of things. Discussing. But so right now, the last outfit was just pre-prepared for.
Okay, CISA twelve?
Nick Madison gave an update on his working with the Washburn School District to connect superintendent search. The CISA board was interested, interested in hearing how that was going. He is working with CISA eleven and UW Exapier to try to encourage more people to consider the profession of being a superintendent. Jamie Glass, he's our technology director for the districts. He is an incident responder for cybersecurity process state. He's conducting cybersecurity assessments in thirteen CISA twelve districts. Assesses their security posture and determine the next steps. Some of the next steps are incident response plans for cybersecurity, response teams in districts and remediation plans for the next steps.
Yep. We've met with him already. Yep.
If something happens.
And that's great narration, come on, we some testing, so I have to see if we're vulnerable or not, and see what we can fix that.
The audience is a.
Thanks. I I just wanna say that if we if we do end up with Nick as the working with the strategic plan, I have been very happy with the work that he's done with us for the superintendent search, so you know, I think he would be a good choice on that.
He said he's never really, he's watched Chris and worked with Chris, but he's never run one on his own, but felt pretty calm.
Sure. Well, he certainly seems capable.
I think he was more of.
Sure, I'm sure. And we didn't, we didn't have anything from the educator council, okay?
We'll be, we'll be next week.
Next week.
Two weeks.
Well, we were meeting last Monday.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thanks. And then Ivy, I think you're up next with the elementary discipline report.
Okay, and Ms. Kelly, feel free to chime in, this is something that we've sort of presented together. And Board two, please, you know, interrupt at any point and I'm happy to go into detail.
Can you guys see this, move it a little bit?
How about me, am I in the way?
Everybody good?
Yeah.
All right.
Felt like, okay, all right, great. All right, so yeah, just a little bit modified version of what was presented at Parent Advisory Committee, but something I always like to draw attention to is how important it is that we stay true to our mission, our vision, our collective commitments, whether we're making decisions about budgets or staffing, or academics, or supporting students with their social, emotional, behavioral learning, it's always important that we stay true to that mission statement. And so a few things that really jump out is that I'm supporting students to enter the global society. That is our, why we're here, that's why we do the work that we do and not only to enter that global society, but to be contributing citizens. And those are the skills that they're developing here in in our school, in our district. I focused in on elementary, of course, because this was elementary parent advisory committee and this report is specific to elementary. But the same thing is true to our vision statement, our collective commitments. You'll notice in here that it's a community approach and it's also focusing on the whole child. And so all of the parts, the strengths and challenges of each unique student and who they are as an individual. And then also want to draw attention to this idea that our our emphasis is high levels of learning, right? That's why we're here and that's why we do what we do and that high levels of learning is really top priority. When it comes to collective commitments, you can see those are the things that we as a staff have all committed to doing and how we know we will best serve our students and our community. So you can see ensuring all students are included and engaged, working with students, working with families. You'll also notice that it says relevant and engaging standards based social emotional curricula. We can't expect our students to do something that we haven't taught them how to do, and so we need to constantly be, take a proactive approach to teaching our skill, our students, the skills that they need to be successful in school and out of school. And those skills change over time, we are in a little bit of uncharted water right now when it comes to post pandemic, because there are different skills needed, there are different challenges that students are facing. And it is our responsibility to update how we support them and how we teach them proactively to address that.
Can you just talk a little bit about the process of how you developed those collective commitments?
Oh, sure, yeah, it's been a great, it's been a really great process. It started through the Research or Practice Inclusive Communities, RPIC grant that we participated in a few years ago. We knew we had a strong district mission statement that was developed by staff in the board several years ago. But we didn't really have a strong vision statement at either of the building levels. Most teams will develop that vision statement and then pass it out, so sort of a top down approach, pass it out to all the teams. We're Washburn, we like to do things our own way, we did it backwards, but in my opinion, we did it the more impactful, meaningful way. We had each team, so each PLC team at the high school, the middle school and the elementary, develop their own vision statement. We defined, what does this mean, what's the purpose behind it? They created it, we had leadership teams at each building, put all of those things up on the board. And then we took out the commonalities, where are we seeing this, every team mentioned community, this is important, this has to be a part of it. We created that vision statement, brought it back to the team, back and forth until it was fine tuned. And the same exact process was was used with collective commitments. And now we use the mission, the vision and collective commitments in every staff meeting, in every PLC meeting as we hire new staff members. This is what our packet shows us that we are making decisions on new staff who join us, so that's the process that we used. Yeah, thanks for asking, great question. Everything, yep. And the last one I'll draw attention to in here is the bottom bullet says targeted support based on the unique needs of each child. We talk a lot about that with school improvement work and the academic interventions. But we utilize the same system for students who need behavioral interventions, social emotional interventions too. Just a little bit of more detail on this, the history of the system, when I stepped in as principal, so I'm in my fourth year. I know one of the top priorities of the elementary staff was a strong behavioral response system. And so that's something that my first day on the job, I got to jump into. Responding to the pandemic and creating a behavior system, those were my two agenda items as we jumped into it that summer. And so right away in the staff kind of remembers as we reminisce about, we created a system where we wanted immediate response for for teachers in the classroom, rather than sending kids out of the classroom, rather than being alone in a classroom without an additional person to support you. We want an immediate system and so we developed, they call the office, office is always there, they walk you, me on the walkie talkie or radio, I had there and I I help. And sometimes it's just simple, kid needs a break or a little extra support, sometimes it's an interruption, you know, whatever the case is, we want that person to be there. We found out that was sort of a beginning phase and we needed to. We found out that was sort of a beginning phase, and we needed to develop that further, because then what happens if I'm in a school improvement committee meeting? What if I'm working with another student? And so we developed that system further. That's when Ms. Kelly and I really started working together, and we shared that radio and that system. And we also started to work proactively, we noticed, oh man, we're getting a lot of calls for the same student. What can we do to support the student? How can we take a proactive approach? From there, we expanded the team, and I can remember sitting in Ms. Betsy's old classroom, and I'm trying to think of all the people who are on the table. So Ms. Betsy, and Mrs. Sepa, and Mrs. Gaber, and Mr. Goodness, we had Ms. Olson, it was just a really great crew of teachers and instructional assistants, all different grade levels and content areas. And we started to figure out the nitty-gritty of, what is a bottom-line behavior? What is not acceptable? What do we do when someone does that? How do we respond and connect with families? How do we record that that happened? And we went through and just sort of reestablished that system. We then transferred into a parent-friendly version, submitted to the school board for approval, and it's part of the student handbook that's sent home each year. And the guiding document that we use as we connect with students and staff and families as we move forward. This graphic may be familiar to many people, but maybe it's not. But you think about R T I or multi-equitable, equitable, multi-level systems of support. We know that in the best-case scenario, so let's think academics, high-quality instruction, this is the best lesson you can imagine, hands-on, engaging, standards-based. Eighty percent of our students are going to learn that material. That's the best-case scenario. We know that twenty percent, and that's the two other colors there, and that, that portion of the graph, are going to need us to reteach it. They're going to need to hear it twice, they're going to need to hear it in a different way, they're going to need to practice it, and that's okay, that's part of learning. But we also see that when it comes to behavior, we send kids out for recess, we give them the expectations, we have strong supervision, eighty percent of students are going to do great. Twenty percent are going to need extra support, they're going to need to practice and reteach, and have an additional person there to support them. And within those two additional colors, you can see the smallest sliver is three to five percent of students are going to need even more than that. They're going to need one-on-one instruction, they're going to need someone right there with them, they're going to maybe need to practice in a different setting, all of those things to help them be successful. And we know that's a really high-functioning system if you're at those percentages, and if you're not, then you know you've got work to do. We just looked at, so every week, Kelly and I look through the data, because we look to see how many calls are we getting? How many students are responding to those calls? We just looked today, eleven students, and this was from coming back from the break, have needed additional support. It doesn't always happen to be a big emotion or a bottom-line behavior, but just another call. Eleven students out of three hundred is three point six percent, which means that we're in a high-functioning system, right? But also, also means that there's always new work to do. There are always students who are going to need additional support, and that's why we're here. Something that was really powerful in our parent advisory committees was the commonalities and the common ground, because we have really nice diverse perspectives in that, that committee. And so we had some common ground that we all felt like we really agreed upon, and one of those things is all students can learn. We are a hundred percent committed to the fact that all students can learn, academics, social-emotional learning, behavioral. All students have strengths and challenges, and so we know that there, I think sometimes when you hear dialogue in the community, or even sometimes maybe we can fall into this trap of thinking about some students this, or those students do this. All students have strengths, academic strengths. Students who are zipping through math, ask them to take apart a carburetor, maybe it's not going to go so well, and vice versa. And the same thing is true when it comes to social-emotional learning and behaviors as part of learning. So all students have strengths and challenges. I had mentioned this previously, but it will always come back to a focus on learning. And then the other thing I like to remind especially families about, because they're not in the thick of the educational research like we are. But the decisions we make are not personal decisions or a personal opinion about how to do something, it is grounded in educational research. And when we, I kind of explained this to the parents advisory committee, but educational research doesn't mean there's one research, you know, one thing happened out there, and they said, oh yeah, this is what we found. This is like thousands and tens of thousands of studies, a meta-analysis of educational research. And, and Hattie is really the person who has come out now, and you've probably heard Angie make reference to that in the work that we do, but this is how we make our decisions, and then local data. So when Kelly and I look at that data, we looked at today, we saw that it was pretty even across the board, because we'd go by day, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, for a while there. There was a lot of calls on Mondays, and we started to just change how we did things on Mondays, right? But we can see the consistency, and we make decisions based on that. And then the last one is a commitment to continuous improvement, because we always can improve the system. We know that from school improvement work, but it, same thing applies to this concept, too. Oh, the other thing I think that was really nice common ground, even on differing opinions, was this concept. I mentioned this at the previous board meeting, but it was a little hard to describe without a visual. But this is something that was introduced to us through CISA twelve, Amanda Truck works with us on professional development. And this language really stuck with our team, and because this felt, really felt good, and I brought to the parent advisory committee, there was a lot of agreement on that, too. And it's sort of a spectrum of high structure and high support. And if you think about sort of that bottom quadrant, if there's a low structure and low support, it's going to be really hard for students to be successful. They don't have the system in place, the expectations in place, and they don't have someone helping them do it. High structure and low support is maybe seen a little bit more often in parenting styles, you have expectation, if you don't do it, you pay the consequence and you move on. We can do that in schools, and there's a time and place for it, but we also know that's not the most effective way for students to learn. But we also don't want to have low structure where we don't have expectations, we don't have follow-through, but we really support them and care for them and show a lot of love, right? That's that bottom quadrant down here. So we know that the best, most effective learning environment has high structure and high support. And we know that it's going to differ, because our kindergarten classrooms walk down the hallway in line behind their teacher. And our sixth graders don't, because they have lower structure, because they've shown that they can do that, and they've developed those skills over time. So it's going to vary, but it was something that we kind of focused on. Is that maybe identifying specific areas where we need higher structure. That's always, that's part of continuous improvement. And we, we added it to recess was a great example. We've added additional teachers to recess and lowered the number of students, because we needed to provide more support, and more, sorry, higher, higher structure. And so it's something that we're constantly reflecting on, but that common piece of that's our goal, I think, was, really was positive feedback at the parent advisory committee. So that was all kind of philosophical pieces, but now here's sort of the nitty-gritty of it, and you, this will look very familiar to you, because it's in the student handbook that's approved each year. But the approach that we take is preventing, responding, and restoring. If we can put most of our emphasis on preventing challenging behaviors from happening in the first place, that's our goal. We know that even with the best-case scenario, it's still going to happen, so we have to have a strong system in place to respond. And then when we do respond, then how do we then restore the relationships or the damage that was done? And so here are some specific examples of that. Lifelong learning standards, also known as social-emotional learning competency, competencies. So specifically teaching our students what we want them to, the skills we want them to learn, working cooperatively, working independently, accepting differences. Those are all specific skills that we're teaching. Since Ms. Kelly has joined us, we added anti-bullying units, and we do feedback from students to see, how do they feel like? Do you feel like there's bullying as a problem in our school? Where is this happening? Really positive feedback and very low number of incidences, but because we've taken such a proactive approach to it. I just had a conversation with a student the other day about this, and we, he was able to engage in a really high-level conversation about, is this bullying? Is it not? What makes it bullying? What doesn't? And this has really also helped prevent it with like the bystanders, how do you as a, somebody who's witnessing something contribute to? What we quickly realized is that a lot of the instances that were brought to our attention were not instances of bullying, but they were instances of conflict. Conflict is normal, it is healthy, but it's uncomfortable. And a lot of the parent phone calls I was receiving as we dug into what was happening, it was, it was a conflict, it was a social conflict, there wasn't a power dynamic, it wasn't a repeated incident. But it probably didn't feel good for either one person involved. So what did we do? Ms. Kelly, I started to teach conflict resolution as a very explicit skill in all the grade levels this year, and common language across the board. Do you want to just give a quick little like ICAN statements and some of the language that we're using?
Broke it into three different parts. The first was to really have students focus on like I centred language. So in a conflict situation, a student who's, you know, feeling disrupted or upset is going to come up with an I statement. I feel, fill in the blank, when something happens. And then kind of the end result being, could you please, could you do this differently? Could you stop? Could you please not do that? And so actually with all classrooms, I can't remember if I did, I did do four things, four K to six. We started by helping kids understand how to build I statements, which sometimes feels a little corny, because it's very formulaic. So in the older grades, we got to learn how to disguise our I statements in like normal person speak. Second group was helping kids understand when somebody is giving the I statement. How do you receive that, rather than like sludge in your chair, roll your eyes, and like look over your shoulder, because that's not going to work to solve conflict. So we talked about active listening. And did some fun role-playing that like most kids really appreciate, you know, I think it's hilarious to watch people role-playing. And then the last and final part was to put both of those pieces together. When somebody has a conflict with another person, one of them comes up with an I statement. The other person practices active listening, and then let's see if we can sort of, in a very small way, role-play what this would look like. And primarily the older kids, as they got more comfortable with this, within that lesson, could come up with conflicts on the fly. Show that they were actively listening and reflect back to the person giving the I statement. And then, you know, in a very soft way, figure out how to resolve a pretend conflict that they have with each other, so that's kind of natural with that.
Other preventative measures, professional development for the staff. So I had mentioned previously, working with CISA twelve to ensure we're using, utilizing the best practices within the best system. They also come and assess how we're doing, and so Amanda Truck comes with the clipboard, and she watches how students enter, she watches, what, looks for what the classrooms include, how do students start their day? What does recess look like? How do kids line up? And then she takes note of that and then gives us that feedback. We had really outstanding scores, which was pretty exciting, and we had some areas that we felt like, yep, we're going to work on these, and we're going to focus on them. Being smart about schedules. So here's an example, we had specials was an area, we had more conflicts than we did in other times, what was going on here? We noticed that we have four grades and specials at the same time, and they all cross in a very small hallway. That's really tricky, right? So what we did is that on one week, music and art switch, very small transition, library and gym switch, very small transition, significantly reduced the number of instances during transitions. But we also adjust the schedules of students, and this one's a little bit more serious, because this is pretty impactful on students. If a student is continuously showing us they don't have the skills to safely engage in recess or a portion of their day. We adjust our schedule to ensure that they are safe and can make those safe choices and develop those skills, and that the rest of the class is safe and can learn in a high, high-quality environment, too. Of course, we always want to strive to develop those skills to return back to that schedule, but there are many students who have adjusted schedules based on this data. Same thing with supervision. Some of our recesses have one teacher out there, because those students have the skills to engage successfully, and some, some recesses have three teachers, because they need additional support and supervision. There's probably a whole bunch of other examples I could give of prevention, especially at the classroom levels, because teachers do this in everything they do all the time. But as we move on to the responding, there are going to be instances, there are going to be times that we need to respond to those. And so what we do, I explain the radio system, we now have a team of us, and so instead of having just one person or two people responding, there's a crew of us. And we always have somebody available, and sometimes it's just a sense of relief for a teacher, no, there's a second adult to team up. Sometimes it's for that student who knows that they have a person, a safe person they can go to. We often have that additional adult join, sometimes that adult will then take over instruction, so that does not become interrupted, and that the teacher can work one-on-one with the student, or vice versa. And then sometimes that student has to leave that space, if it's not the right match for them at that time, then they are removed from that space, so they have the time and space they need to resolve that big emotion or work through that conflict. In that response phase, and I'm not sure, I know we're kind of zipping through a meeting, and now this is going in depth, but I'm really thankful for the opportunity to share this. At this point in the parent advisory committee, Ms. Kelly shared some really intensive information on brain science. And what is happening when a student is having a big emotion, or melting down, or having a big conflict that feels unreasonable, or it's hard to see from the outside, like, why are they doing this? And all of those things that are happening in the brain, why it's happening in their brain, and how you respond to it. And something that we do is that we take a gentle approach to responding to that student who is in crisis. And so we're going to find the method that works best for them to go from here down to here. And sometimes this looks like taking Nella the dog for a walk, and sometimes this looks like going to my quiet space where we can work with Play-Doh. And I think that sometimes people see that piece, and they feel like that's where it stops. Right? We've heard these concerns in a parent advisory committee, somebody brought up, oh, they get a piece of candy, and then it's done, and it's just not true, that's just not what it is. We are going to take a gentle approach, because if we come in and we say, stop it, knock it off right now, what is that student who is already in an elevated state going to do? They're going to escalate higher, and it's going to become an unsafe situation for them or for others. So we take that gentle approach, but it doesn't stop there. That is only to support students as they come to a regulated state, and then can then address what happened, resolve what happened, and then we can prevent it from happening again. When it comes to restore peace, you know, there's that element of apologizing and making it right. We know that actions speak louder than words, and so we, we really try to encourage our students to take action to make it right. If they are doing something that's impacting, say this table, they're drying on it, what are they going to do? They're going to be cleaning that table. But we also want to take it a step further, because you want to leave it better than it was left for you, and so guess what that kid's doing all week? They're cleaning tables. Because it wanted to improve the school or improve themselves. And we also know that there are times that students are going to need support beyond what the school provides, and that has been a huge push for us, is making sure that families and students have the resources they need to get the help that may go beyond what the school provides. If you notice in here, there isn't a separate category that says consequences, but that is an important piece, and I think that's another common misconception, that there isn't consequences. And so I just put it in a separate box cycle, we always go back to prevent, but this is sort of what the consequences look like. I put it in a little bit friendlier terms, connect with family, but how do you think kids feel when they have to call home and tell their family what they did? Not great. How do you think that family feels when they come in and have to meet with me and that student and talk through this? It is a big inconvenience to their day, but it is so much more impactful when that student can work with that family member and with me, or with the person in which it happened. Oftentimes, it's missing privileges. If there's a conflict at recess, they did not make a, a choice that met our expectations, they're going to practice that. During a very inconvenient time, which happens to be recess the next day. And so we want to make sure the punishment fits a crime, and missing privileges is a big piece of that. We do record it if it's a bottom-line behavior on their student record, and so that would be Skyward. There are times in which suspensions are needed, and that they do, they do happen, especially if it's a physical incident. You can see that local authorities, that is a part of that process, especially if it was something like theft. And then you can see expulsion is also part of that spectrum of consequences. You can see it's not in the restore box, because we know it is not an effective way for students to restore what has gone wrong. We also know that it is at times necessary, a necessary component. Before I move into the last slide, which is continuous improvement and feedback and kind of next steps, I just wanted to pause here for a second for questions.
Well, I'm just going to ask a technical question, a, a easy question, with the, with your radios, do you, are they just, can everybody hear them, or do you have like an earpiece?
That's a good question. It took us a little fine-tuning to figure out that system. Student support, call two oh two. That's what we say on the radio. Anyone can hear who has a radio, but the person who knows it's their shift, they go to a telephone for confidential conversation, they call the office, and the office says, please go help in this classroom, or this student, or this teacher. Yeah, so it did take a little fine-tuning, but that's the system that we use to respect that confidentiality, yet make it as efficient as possible.
Put something in your ears quick.
Yeah. And great when you don't have pockets, because walkie-talkies.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Yes.
Can you talk to the board about how is that a set required to be a good board?
Yeah, sure. So bottom-line behaviors was a really powerful conversation on what does this entail? And over time, too, we expand that definition, because like I said, the needs of our students change over time. But we were able to define it pretty clearly when it came to vandalism, theft, physical incidences, those are all bottom-line behaviors that immediately get put on student record, there's an immediate consequence for that within that box. And that's something that the staff continually reviews, and so we had a team establish those originally. At that time, we had a few students who were really facing challenges in the younger grade levels. So then we also had like running away from the building was included in there, because that was something we were seeing. Yes, it was a trauma response of fight or flight, but also it was a bottom-line behavior we needed to have recorded and put in place. As time goes on, you see those needs change, and so we've added more with language. Language is really powerful, it may not have a physical impact, but it has an emotional impact, and so we've added that as bottom-line behaviors, that's something that's recorded. So it's, it is a system that is developed by the staff each year, approved by the board each year, and everyone receives feedback from parents each year. So I always put in that top of the handbook, that it's a living document each year, it updates, and we have parent feedback, too.
What is, what is your process or your, your way of, when you have a student who needs to leave? And is in a special place to chill or whatever they're doing? How do you get back to the teacher to let them know where they're at and?
Yeah. That was, so staff feedback for the end of last year was wanting to improve that communication system, because it's hard to have a really full, in-depth conversation with a teacher in that moment, especially because they're probably continuing to teach the rest of the class. So we're working on a couple of different systems to support that. Sometimes it's email communication, because then it's a record of it, and it's accessible at that person's convenience. We did explore a little slip of paper that shows contact a parent, you circle it, and it's a very simple, quick system. And so that's something that we may pursue, right now it's email or in-person phone call, or, sorry, in-person communication. And then also we utilize student support meetings, so it's not something I really mentioned. So it's not something I really mentioned in here, but it kind of goes to that prevent piece or that cycle back. If we have a student, and this happens almost all the time, if it's the same, the same student at the same time, we need to change what we're doing. If we have two instances at 12 o'clock, guess what? We're going to either change our schedule at 12 or we're going to make sure that student has a different plan at 12 o'clock. And how we do that is then have a meeting with the classroom teacher or the person making the call and then the team members who join it so we can work proactively. Yeah.
I think that's powerful because a lot of the calls. They went through a specific system, specific responses. How is this different than that?
Yeah.
And how is this moving more towards that lifelong education?
Yeah, yeah. So that kind of leans into the research. What is the most effective strategy? And that's what we're using. We know that the most effective strategy is prevention. And so that's why we put such a big emphasis on that. I think a previous system was much more reactionary. A student will misbehave, that student has a consequence. But we, what we see data shows us that student continues to misbehave because they haven't developed the skills to stop doing it. And so that's why we are expanding our system and moving forward with it. It is exciting. Sometimes this feels different. Sometimes it feels like really innovative. But then when I talk with people like the people from DPI who came to visit and I was explaining it, they're like, yep, 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 yep. Because this is what is happening. This is what all schools are striving to do. This is what CISA twelve was coaching us on. And it's, it's sort of a progression and it might look different than it might have before, but it looks different because we are focusing on learning and we're focusing on what's most effective. And not just for the student involved, but for all students. No, nope. Yep. Yes, yes, absolutely.
And there's always consequences. Sometimes they're good and sometimes they're bad. The, a lot of what you were saying is really reflective of what the PBIS program was. Is that something that is like? No longer even talked about anymore or is that?
Beginning is, yeah, great question. Yeah, there's some new research out showing some of the challenges or ineffectiveness of the PBIS, of components of the PBIS system. Overall, there's some pieces that are, like you said, there's so many commonalities.
Right.
System wide, you have to have a system structure. It has to be in alignment with a tiered intervention system, which all of this is, right?
And the teaching part of it.
Teaching part of it, the proactive part of it. So all of those components are very research based. Some of the PBS puts an emphasis on the reward system to it. And positive reinforcement is still an important piece of learning. But some of the, like, it's a lot of the tickets and trinkets and stuff. And some of that is coming back is not, not always trauma sensitive and not always effective across the board for all students. And so I would say the core PBIS is still effective and that research is showing us sort of like the next step beyond that. Does that make sense? Kat, what do you think, Ms. Kelly? Is that an accurate explanation or anything you want to add to that?
So do we use a PBIS framework in approach for behavior stuff? I would have heard that for the last school that I got did a lot of PBIS and was moving away from it because there were a lot of like, use your pencil, use your sticker, you want a water bottle. And it feels really empty. And then also, yeah, does it, is it affected? So, yeah, I would have thought.
Yeah. And, and not all of the PBIS use trinkets and correct. And yes, still correct. You know, if it was, you know, getting to have lunch with somebody or things like that too. So it was a lot of relational.
Yeah.
Kind of pieces.
Yeah. The last piece I have is, I mentioned before, continuous improvement. And things can coexist, like, I, some of the data is, like, I look at bus reports. We have less bus reports at this point in this year than we did last year and less from last year from the previous year. Same thing with Skyward incidences. But it's important to acknowledge that two things can coexist because you could hear from somebody that their kid just had an incident on the bus. And we have less bus reports happening. You know what I mean? So it's not saying that things are not happening because we know how that system works. And we know that we're always committed to that continuous improvement. So I wanted to highlight some of the feedback that the parent advisory committee had for us because I thought this was really, really impactful. One of them was, I want to word this the right way because there's different ways to interpret it. But when we went through this, the response that I heard from those participants was that they were really excited to hear about all the training and thinking and systems and professional development that was behind this. They felt very relieved that it wasn't sort of an empty system that was sort of just whatever happens, happens. And they were hoping that we could share this system with families proactively, not always afterward, the fact. And so that's something I'm excited to think about. And like I had mentioned, the family engagement event that's happening. That's a great thing that we could put on display and answer questions about and we'll continue to communicate that. We did acknowledge the length of time that change takes. And in some ways, that changes so quickly. So there are students in early elementary who last year or the year before were having multiple incidences of, or they were in crisis mode. And they were not successful in the classroom with their peers. We went through this system with them and they are now fully successful. And it is so powerful. It is so exciting. And it's, the first year was hard because we didn't see it immediately. But over time, we did see it and it is so rewarding. And we're seeing it on small scales and on large scales. And it's hard not to, it's, without really giving some of that student confidentiality away, it's harder to show the details of those stories. But if you ask any staff member, they will tell you a success story and that's really cool. But at the same time, I think we want immediate, we want instant. So if a student has a hard time, the next day, we, we don't want to see that again. And that they might do it great for a week and then a week later they like, oh, did not do so great at recess. And that's really hard to see. And it often feels from the outside looking in like, it's not working or we're not doing anything. And so we just had a really good conversation about that. We also talked about identifying times to increase structure. We had mentioned that earlier. That's an ongoing priority. Supporting all students, including students who are not in crisis, right? And then also just a tiered intervention for students who are proficient and advanced, either academically or when it comes to social, emotional, behavioral skills. Because many students are above their same age peers with some of these social skills and making sure we have that tiered system to support all students above and below. And that fits in really nicely with our school improvement work because that's a priority for us too. And then staff feedback, I let everybody know about a week ago that we're going to do this topic. I like to include staff perspective as much as possible. And just said, hey, whatever you want to send me, I'll share with the board. And so I do have a couple of things to share. Classroom perspective, this was from one of the classroom teachers. Since implementing the behavior response system, my ability to receive or support when needed has improved tremendously. Team Awesome, oh, that's our nickname for the walkie talkie team. Team Awesome responds promptly, checks in with me on the situation, helps support the student or take over teaching so I can support the student in need. The whole staff trainings on restorative practices have been hugely beneficial and I see it impacting students daily and their experience at school with school being a more positive place. I see massive benefits for all students in the direct teaching of communication and listening skills that Ms. Kelly has been doing as well as classroom teachers. Students are more able to express their needs and resolve conflicts with their peers. These are life skills that they will benefit, that will benefit them endlessly. I feel strongly that the response to challenging behaviors at our school is what is best for all students, my own children included. Daily, I'm grateful to be sending my child to a school embraces students where they are with compassion and intention and it works with them to develop the skills they need to be successful at school and in life. This next one is really lengthy, but I do want to just highlight a few of these points. This is coming, so that was classroom perspective. This is coming from a special education perspective. So one of our teachers had been a special education teacher in the elementary school, had left for a short period of time and now is back teaching special education. And he just wanted to draw attention to the drastic change in the system from what we previously had. And this kind of speaks to what you mentioned previously and how it's evolved over time. After a brief stint away, it was almost a shock to come back to special education at the elementary school and find such an enormous shift in how we respond to students that are in crisis and are struggling to meet classroom expectations. And so what he kind of went on to say is the stress that happens, it was on the teachers who are teaching special education. So previously, if a student is in need and they are on your caseload, you were pulled from what you were doing, that academic intervention to go respond. And that student was left without an intervention. And we changed that system so that all students, all teachers, whether that the classroom teacher, special education teacher can continue teaching the students that they are working with. And we have another person who is available to then come support. And that drastic change, I could actually just share this with you because it's kind of a long one. But if you're interested in reading, I'd be really happy to because I think it just shows how impactful it has for all students, including those who need those interventions, academic interventions. There are just a few other things that people have made note of with just how do we, how do we know it's a most effective response in that moment and continue to stay on top of that research? Continue to train, do our trainings and professional development, both for all staff and for the people responding to the crises or the challenging behavior. And then also continue to increase the consistency of how we do data recording. And so we have a much improved system in place, but we always can improve that because we're making our decisions based on data. We want that to be a really accurate system and we're going to continue to work on that.
My question.
Yeah.
That is, you know, like, if the tree falls and the forest and nobody's around in the area and this is being alluded to it on the bus, like you know, these behaviors are happening and they're not getting reported. Do you have a sense of like behaviors that aren't being reported in a school?
Um, yes, there are very few behaviors that aren't getting reported. Even the bus ones, like happening, those are still getting reported. Okay. Bus is a little bit tricky because there isn't a direct supervisor on there, even though they're coming to and from school, but the bus driver. But what we've changed our system is ensuring we have supervision at all times. And so there are very few instances in which a teacher wouldn't see what's happening. But also that's why we're leaning on the conflict resolution because we're, we don't want students to be okay with something that happened that wasn't, that something that made them uncomfortable or impacted them negatively. So that they have a couple of options. One is using an I statement to resolve that conflict. But two is going to a safe person for support. And that's actually a whole nother unit that we do is helping students identify who are the people in your school that you can go to, to report a conflict or to ask a question. Who are the safe people at your home so that we make sure we can hear about it and really positively reinforcing students for that communication? Because that's how we respond to behaviors is knowing that they happen, knowing how they impacted people and then preventing them from happening again.
And then a follow-up is regarding the staff feedback. Do you have an outlet or a way for staff to give feedback anonymously?
Yeah. Yep, we use Google Forms the most often. And we do it all the time on all different topics, but we've done quite a few on just the behavior system in general. We do it in person and then through email and stuff, right? Which would not be anonymously, but Google Forms has been really effective at that. No name needed, no email login and then just open-ended questions. Absolutely.
So if the thing, there's something's going into Skyward, who actually is putting it in Skyward? Do the teachers do it or do you do it or?
Yeah, I do it. I'd asked CISA twelve what their recommendation was when we were working on improving our system. And they said, for consistency, they recommend schools have one person who enters it. They suggested someone in the office. I felt like I wanted it to be me to start with because I can make sure. The two things I was noticing is that there was not always a consequence or response in place. And, and not no fault of anyone, but just when you have an underdeveloped system, right? And then two is that there's a box to check to make sure the parent's getting notified and that wasn't happening either. So that's why I thought I would oversee them. But then the nice thing is that the teacher who experiences it is the person who has a first-hand report. They have the most accurate information and they are the one who submits emails. So that's in itself the first layer of documentation. It is now at school documented email. And then from there, then I review it. I make sure that either we have something in place so it doesn't happen again, entered into Skyward, parents are communicated and all the follow-through happens. Yeah. It's different though, and I think some people prefer it and don't prefer that system, but that's what was recommended and that's helped us improve it. Eventually, would we move back to having staff just implement it immediately? And I get the notification, not opposed to that at all.
When did, when did you implement the, the Team Awesome?
Yeah, yep. Yep, last year was the kind of the pilot year and then developed over the course of last year. Feedback from the staff at the end of the year and to make improvements into this year and then new elements to it this year. And it continues to grow. We opened it up to, we had kind of a select group, group of people who had flexible schedules and the training to be that. We opened it up and we actually had two new people who have instructional assistants who have the skill set and wanted to join it and are doing awesome. So it continues to grow too.
So how many people do you have that are involved with that?
Three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah, seven of us. And that doesn't include the two people in the office who are a major part of it, even if they're not the ones responding, they're receiving and communicating.
So do all seven get this notification at the same time and then whoever can do it?
Each of us are designated a certain time of the day. So the time that Kelly is on, she does not have other obligations. Because I don't want to pull her from her guidance lesson. Because if we're pulling her from conflict resolution or anti-bullying, it's not a good system. And so each person has a designated time. And then I do backup. So if Kelly is on a second call or has a parent phone call come in or something, then I'm the person to respond. So we have a person designated at each time slot and then me for backup.
And you've been able to really hit all of the calls and take care of all those calls?
We have, we have. I'd say there was, there are times when you get multiple calls at once. And so what we do is we'll kind of divide and conquer. And then we also realized, okay, what are we doing schoolwide? We noticed last year, I think it was 12:30. There was a time in the early afternoon where like, wow, there's a lot of calls right here. What are we doing schoolwide? Oh, we had transitions to every special, lunch and recess in every grade level. Okay, let's work on transitions as a school and then we're able to reduce those. So are there times that there's multiple calls that are, we can get a delayed response to? It's going to happen at times. We try to respond as quickly as we can to then prevent that from happening again. Yeah.
Is, I, I don't want to, I don't want to feel like I'm sticking my nose in where it doesn't need to be, but.
Go for it.
Is, is there a way that you can get back, report back to us when you're doing this, the, the Google, Google response from different people so that we can see staff responses? You know what I'm saying that are?
Oh, sure, like staff feedback.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
So that we could just see where, what people are saying.
Yeah.
You know, how they're feeling about this whole program.
Sure. Yeah. Yep. That sounds good.
Other questions?
Just a comment, I appreciate the name change to Team Awesome because their previous name created panic and trauma.
Code Red.
I'm in my masters and I don't think I was doing with a grant today or program.
What? Team Awesome, it's a nice friendly one. Hey, Team. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions from anybody? Okay.
Thanks, Abby. When you were talking about it last time and you were talking about how it was important to make sure that parents and community and everybody knew exactly how this program worked. We kind of thought that we should probably know too.
Yeah, yeah.
So I really appreciate you coming and explaining it all and talking about it because I think it's all something that we, we need to hear.
Absolutely.
So thanks.
All right. Individual action items. Number one. You want to respond and talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Prefacing the previous board.
Yeah.
Reports, this is the time where by state statute, the board can state formal action to limit regular and special education spaces for students.
And we typically do not limit those spaces. Okay, would someone like to make that motion? Or you, you will?
Yes. I make the motion not to limiting the, limiting the number of 2024, 2025 open enrollment spaces of any grade level or regular ed or special ed applications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
I know everybody's so quiet tonight.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number two.
Make a motion to approve John Will McGuire as a drug club advisor for the 2324 school year.
Any other discussion? On favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Three.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Thanks to Shandra for getting that to happen. All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Motion carried. And?
I'll second.
On favor?
I agree.
Both? Motion carried. All right. We are at this point in time going to convene into closed session. So thank you all for coming and thank you, Kelly, for being part of that presentation.
I'll give it to the second.